Okay. I'll call this 226. Work study for Mount Lake Terrace City Council.
Okay, we can't really hear you, Mayor Protem. You're fading in and out, but I will call roll. Councilmember Murray?
Attending remotely via teleconference.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Attending, here, attending remotely via, um, remotely.
Mayor Matamoto Wright?
Attending remotely via teleconference.
Mayor Protem Wall?
Uh, attending remotely via teleconference.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Here.
And Councilmember Woodard?
Attending remotely via teleconference.
That concludes roll call.
Okay, very good. Do we have any comments? Can you hear me? Public comment?
Yes, Jennifer is grabbing them right now.
Okay, great.
I have to run to get the papers. Uh, general-
Just supposed to hear me?
Yes, general public comment. We have two people who have signed up in person. The first one is Brianna Osgood. You'll have five minutes at the podium.
Hello. Um, my name is Brianna Osgood, and I am a resident of Linwood. What I'm about to share may seem unexpected, but for me, it's the reality I've carried for months. I'm standing here because I've followed every step, every pro- every process we're told to follow. And still, nothing has changed with the Mount Lake Terrace Police Department. In January, I reported my sexual assault to the Mount Lake Terrace Police Department. I submitted video evidence, screenshots, and named witnesses. I provided a full victim statement. I did what conventional wisdom tells you to do. Go to the police, tell the truth, and trust the system. But all I got was silence. No one contacted me. After four follow-up attempts, I found out through a receptionist that my case had been moved to inactive three months later. When I finally spoke to the detective, he was completely indifferent, almost amused. That was our only interaction. He never interviewed me, something officers would do for basic property crime. He never requested my medical records and only briefly spoke to one witness without following up. He shamed me. He victim blamed me, both in our conversation and, as I later learned, in his report. I wasn't even worth a phone call, let alone an investigation. After that call, I spiraled. I thought maybe these crimes didn't matter, maybe I didn't matter. It had taken me weeks just to find the courage to report, and in the end, it felt like no one looked at what I gave them. With support from friends and family, I reached out to the detective sergeant, so the detective sergeant and copied the chief of police asking how to file a formal complaint along with my concerns. Instead of guiding me through the process, the sergeant submitted one on my behalf. Just a copy of my email, and it was sent to the commander for review. I objected because I hadn't told my full story. Why wasn't I allowed to file a complaint myself when the department policy clearly states I should have been? Shortly after the commander asked to meet, I brought a sexual abuse advocate. We questioned the detective's conduct and the decision to file my complaint without my input. The commander agreed the case could have been handled better, and they said they were trying to help by submitting that complaint. We were told the case would be reopened, reassigned, and he would follow up after reviewing my complaint. That follow-up never came. Thankfully, the case was reopened, which makes it even clearer that they knew my complaint had merit and that the original investigation had been grossly mishandled. While the new detective has treated me with more humanity, the damage is done. Witnesses have disengaged. Evidence has been lost during the four-to-six-month delay. And to my knowledge, the case still hasn't been submitted for prosecution. I actually found out a few hours ago it'll be submitted next week. On July 11th, I was finally told to submit a formal complaint in my own words. But by that point, I'd already followed up three times, only to be told my original complaint wasn't in my own words and had to be resubmitted. First, they didn't explain how to file one. Then they filed something for me without my input. Then they said that wasn't sufficient and asked for one in my own words. So what was the point of the meeting with the commander if not move my complaint forward? On June 12th, I submitted a continuation, this time naming not just the detective, but also the commander in chief. The chief had been copied on just about every email since the beginning. He had every opportunity to step in and didn't, and I never received a single response from him to this day. The commander replied to that email confirming he was still overseeing my complaint despite me specifically naming him in it. I raised the conflict of interest with the city manager. I told the city, I was told the city was looking into it. That was over a week ago, and I've heard nothing since. I still have not been given a neutral party for my complaint. I followed the chain of command. I was respectful. I gave every person involved a chance to do the right thing. All I got was silence, delay, and blame. This process has changed me. It's taken a toll on my mental health, my sense of safety, and my faith in the institutions I was raised to trust. I've been fighting to be heard for six months now, and all I have is a trail of unanswered emails and an unresolved case. At the end of the day, a victim of sexual assault should not have to take on a police department just to have her complaint and case taken seriously. I submitted video evidence showing a part of an assault. Instead of reviewing it with objectivity, they weaponized it against me to justify closing my case. Now, the same department wants to install surveillance cameras around the city, claiming it's to better protect their citizens. Make it make sense. This is no longer just about me. It's about what happens when accountability is replaced with avoidance and public trust is replaced with control. I've run out of options, so I've come to you. So I'm asking for three things. In-depth, trauma-informed interview training for officers. Accountability for policy violations, and an independent review of my case and complaint by a neutral outside party. I am here for every survivor, regardless of gender, who was dismissed before me, for those who will come after me, and for everyone this system has failed. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I want to say, first of all, we're very sorry for the experience you had with our department. And we aren't unable to comment on it, but I did want to, in, please ask that you be sure to leave your contact information for, with the city clerk, with Jennifer, to have our city manager follow up immediately and, and get back to council about where we're at, where this is going. So, thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to have that under council comments, to have any of the comments that we need to make at that time.
Certainly.
Our next public commenter is John Blakeschmidt. You'll have five minutes at the podium.
John Blakeschmidt, Mount Lake Terrace. For how many years have I been telling you there's a problem right over there? You just heard more about it. And it all stops at the top. Somebody that cost the city $2 million bucks, and they make him the chief of police. That's not very good. And you can look that up in the court. I think they went to the 12th district. There was two suits filed against him. Each one of them cost the city about a million. 700 and some thousand each, plus lawyer fees and yada, yada, yada. And I'm sure some of you know about that. And I know some people do because I showed them the, uh, thing from the court. You can, you can have it printed right off and read it. It said not very many nice things about him. Also, another thing I found out, that a lady that used to work here that had everybody's respect told me that they don't, the city's got stuff parked all over on roads, broken down cars beside the road and stuff because the chief of police told them it wasn't a priority to give parking tickets. And that lady worked here a long time, and if you think about it, you probably know who it is. And, uh, we may have a guy dead in a van over here about three blocks. I mentioned that to Mr. Ryan earlier. I drove by twice, and he's sitting there like this. He's either passed out, sleeping, or dead. Take your choice. It's on 54th and 236th. Somebody might look into that, and if he's drunk, they need to haul him to jail. He shouldn't be in the rig. And I'm still, I've got some stuff from the state here about things that are problems for rats. And I mentioned this to, uh, our code enforcement lady, and she says, "Those aren't laws. I can't enforce them." Well, I don't think codes are laws either, are they? So I've been told. She can enforce codes. She ought to, this is what the state thinks should be going on. I paid $1,100 to keep rats out of my house for my neighbor. That's BS. They got stuff growing all over their house. They got crap this high all over. Something needs to be done. I paid that much. Two of my neighbors are paying 60 bucks a month, uh, each to keep rats out of their place. People come every month and do whatever they do. Another guy said he sees them running across the street at night. You know, somebody's got to do something, man. Somebody's got to get off their butt and do something. And that means the city. The, the county health department told me it's code enforcement's job to do that because they don't do it anymore. This county doesn't. What else? Oh, and I don't know, there, there's an article in the Seattle paper called Rat and Rave. Have any of you ever read that? Maybe not. But it said that this guy went, it was a rant to the city of Mount Lake Terrace. You made the paper. And this guy went over to the Ballenger to fish. He had a boat, a trailer and a boat. Well, he couldn't park because, guess what? Single cars were parked in those spots for the boats and to pick up some boats and trailers. So he had to leave, and he was pissed off. And that's because they don't do anything. If you drive up the street, there's crap all over hell. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, John. Jennifer, any other public comment?
Nope, that's the end of general public comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All of us in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda is adopted unanimously. Moving on to the city manager's report. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. A few things to report tonight. First, I wanted to remind everybody that we will be having a change in the agenda management software. So this is the last meeting where kind of the agenda and the materials will look the same, the way they do now. We have a kind of a primer that we're going to send out to you for how we'll be doing it for the next six to eight weeks while we're transitioning to the new system. The new system should be much more seamless, easy to use, and it's less expensive. So that it's a good transition, but it will take a little while. And we'll be happy to help you work through the process as you are navigating the new, new management system. Secondly, I wanted to remind everybody that there is no meeting next week on the 3rd of July, and we'll all be out celebrating at Ballenger Park with the community. And anybody else who'd like to join us? Couple other things. First, for a long time, council has been asking for ways to prioritize registration for recreation programs, swim classes in particular. And we've been able to make that happen with our current software vendor. So coming up here pretty soon, we will be prioritizing those who are returning for new lessons. So, or returning. They've had lessons, they're going to be returning for additional lessons. Second priority will be for Mount Lake Terrace residents. And third priority will be for people that live outside of Mount Lake Terrace. There is a little twist there. If someone is outside of Mount Lake Terrace, but they are returning, they will still be a priority over new Mount Lake Terrace residents. But we're looking for ways to prioritize that registration process so people can participate in our recreation programs if they'd like to. A few other things. The Department of Health, the Senate, the survey for our water system inspection went very well. So I'm happy to report on that. And, um, I already mentioned the event on next Thursday, 3rd of July at Ballenger Park. And on July 10th, we have our Terrace Summer Nights program starting at the Civic Campus. So that'll be fun. And the contractor is mobilizing to start work on the Ballenger viewing trails, viewing platform and trails project. So that's all I have to report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
You're good. Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for the city manager? Uh, Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, city manager. One, thank you to you and the Recreation and Parks team for finding a way to prioritize Mount Lake Terrace residents with registration. I know that has been a big ask from our community, and I know it wasn't an easy solution. And so I appreciate both the hearing of that concern and finding a solution that does help prioritize folks who live here in Mount Lake Terrace getting into those programs when they want to. So very exciting. Thank you for that work. And then just a question about with the change of content management systems for our agendas and whatnot. How does that impact ability to access old agendas, minutes, that sort of thing? In the, I guess particularly in this interim period, are those still accessible? Are those not going to be accessible for a time? Like, what does that look like so that we as council, as well as the community, understand?
Yeah, they will still be accessible, but not as easily, unfortunately, as they are now in the interim period. However, after that interim period is over, it should be as easy to find as, as it has been in the past. It's just this transition period that's going to be a little bit more difficult. If anybody has any requests of information that they'd like to see, please contact me directly or our city clerk, Jennifer Joki, and we will be happy to provide those records for you.
Okay, thank you. What is, so if we wanted to, if folks know they need to go back and pull something, when is, when, when is our current system going dark to where we won't be able to?
Our current contract with our, our vendor that we have today is Granicus. And that ends on Monday, the 30th. And the, the new, this interim solution will run for six to eight weeks while we're migrating all of the data to the new system. And then our new system, Civic Plus, will hopefully start toward the end of August. But we're trying to aim for the, that shorter transition time period in order to make those records accessible online. Anybody can get them at any time. Like I said, in the meantime, if anybody needs anything or would like anything, either myself or our city clerk, Jennifer, would be happy to provide that.
Great, super helpful. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Councilmember Murray. Did anybody else have any questions? Seeing none, we will move on to the third review and public hearing and vote on the ordinance to adopt the recommended code amendments for the middle housing code. We've got Kristi, Community Economic Development Director. Take it away.
Good evening. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council. We, this is our third review of code requirements to, our code language to meet legislative requirements for middle housing. And as you're aware, this is part and parcel of the work that needs to be done for updating our zoning, our residential zoning standards in general with, to be consistent and coordinated with our comprehensive plan and also to meet several legislative requirements that the legislator, legislature has enacted in the last couple of years. So with that, we'll get into the presentation, and we're just going to do a brief overview of some of the materials, hit the high points, and then be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Hi, thank you, councilmembers, for having me back tonight. Heidi Oian with Methune, we're the consultant on this project. It's been a pleasure working with you over the past couple of months on this. Okay, so we heard at the last meeting that you generally support middle housing code revisions. We got into some detail on the alley bonus, making sure that invasive trees aren't protected when alleys and trees are in conflict. And you recognized during that conversation that more discussion around tree code overall would be helpful in the future. You asked us to circle back with the development community on the draft standards, and we've done that. And you asked us to incentivize stacked flats, recognizing that these will be helpful for seniors as they kind of age out of single-family and may not want to or cannot live in vertical townhouse development. These would be great discussions to continue in the upcoming housing action process, or housing action plan process that's coming up. Brief look at the schedule. Tonight, obviously, we hope you adopt the new ordinances. And then following in July and August, Echo Northwest will take you through that housing action plan where you can continue to refine and implement your 2044 vision. Okay. Tonight, we have nine ordinances, as Kristi said, ready for your approval. We'll walk through them one by one, going into more detail on the ones with more significant changes. The first ordinance is Chapter 19.23, Development Standard Uses. This chapter included tables of all the uses allowed in the previous residential zones. So we're proposing to repeal this chapter and then just to incorporate those use tables into Chapter 19.30. This is the second ordinance, ordinance, Chapter 3.96. This is a new chapter covering the residential affordability incentives. It outlines the public benefit standards for the affordable housing bonus. It's compliant with state law HB 1110, the Middle Housing Code. It sets a 50-year term, requires a covenant or deed restriction, requires affordable units have to be substantially similar to the market rate units. It also regulates project eligibility, application procedures, approval criteria, and notarized yearly compliance reviews. This chapter, 19.15, definitions now incorporates several definitions that were embedded in other revised chapters, essentially cleaning up the code to have one place to find definitions that apply throughout the code. We also added several middle housing definitions, including state-defined and Mount Lake Terrace-specific housing types and concepts. Okay, now into the ordinance for 19.30, residential districts. We've discussed the amended chapter in quite a bit of detail in our three previous meetings together. It contains conventional development standards for the residential districts. It incorporates residential use tables from Chapter 23, which I just mentioned, and substantially changes some of the dimensions in the standards table and regulates the scale of development. Also contains new development bonuses and updates to ADUs and open space. Okay, and then this is that first part of the dimensional table. We've seen this before. It regulates lot sizes and density, complying with HB 1110 in the lowest intensity zones, R1 and R2, and exceeding those, the HB 1110 in the higher intensity zones, R3 and R4, as in the areas you plan for more growth. This is the second part of that dimensional table. It regulates lot coverage and floor area ratio, also called FAR. Lot coverage has been adjusted to allow for more middle housing types and single-story additions to existing homes. More FARs granted for more units or for providing public benefits through that bonus program. On the right are some visualizations of what certain FARs would look like on a typical 7,200-square-foot lot. This is the last part of the dimensional table. It provides setbacks for the front, rear, and side yards that correspond to the planned intensity in each zone and also allows some reductions for public benefit bonuses. Echo Northwest is the economic consultant on the project. Throughout the code update process, Echo Northwest used a few different methods to test the proposed code's impact on development and to validate its feasibility, includes, including test fitting of different housing types, which you see on the far right, applying local housing market data to assess financial feasibility, and analyzing the impact of different regulatory changes on development costs, revenues, and returns. In addition, Echo also talked with local developers and other real estate professionals, both while we were developing the code and to get feedback on the draft code. And so many of the proposed changes on, or the proposed codes on tonight's slides are in response to public comment and conversations with developers, ensuring the code actually and effectively promotes middle housing development in Mount Lake Terrace. Chapter 19.30, we're continuing in the same chapter. It also contains accessory dwelling unit standards. These were updated quite a bit to comply with House Bill 1337 for ADUs. Two units are allowed on any lot outside critical environmental areas. Overall, the ADUs must comply with all the standards in the residential zones that we just walked through. But with adding units, the maximum floor area can increase to accommodate those extra units. Garage conversions are allowed, and parking and street improvements are not required to make these more affordable for homeowners to add to their lots. Okay, and then the last part of this chapter, as we've discussed with you in the planning commission, you identified public benefits that were worth providing bonuses for. These include the state-required HB 1110 bonus for affordable housing, which I covered earlier. Other bonuses include onsite tree retention of your beautiful trees, sustainability certification, new connections like alleys and mid-block connections, and bonuses for improved parking courts and shared driveways. Okay, moving into the, a new ordinance, Residential Design Standards, Chapter 19.32. This new chapter is the other meaty one we've been working on together. The standards regulate the look and feel of all development in the residential districts with the overall goal of creating middle housing that's consistent with the scale and character of single-family neighborhoods while maintaining yards and light and air and landscaping between buildings. The chapter covers general and housing type-specific standards, as well as standards that apply to development bonuses. Excuse me. Overall, it uses clear and objective language, specific dimensions, lists of options, and images of good and bad precedents throughout. It does not dictate, dictate style, but allows a range of architectural expression. The general part of these design standards include items on this list. We've worked hard to make these standards meaningfully contribute to the design quality of Mount Lake Terrace while not adding unduly to the cost of development. And then moving into the housing type-specific design standards. HB 1110 law defines nine middle housing types shown in the white boxes. You have to allow at least six of those in Mount Lake Terrace. But you've supported really all middle housing types to offer a diversity of lifestyle and price points. And so we've officially kind of grouped them together into five housing form types for the Mount Lake Terrace code that you see in the colored boxes on the left, including singles, slots, rows, stacks, and courts. Okay, let's discuss another ordinance, Chapter 19.125. This existing parking and loading chapter was updated to incorporate all parking, driveway, and bicycle standards from the previous residential chapters. So there's one place you go to look for parking information across the code. We've updated the parking maximums to be compliant with HB 1110 and 1337. Both of those laws say you can't require parking for affordable housing for sites near transit nor for ADUs. near transit, nor for ADUs. The driveway standards were also updated to support walkability, safety, and street allow for more street parking. Similar to the parking chapter, this amended Chapter 19.126 incorporates EV charging regulations from repealed Chapter 23 and amended Chapter 30, basically to keep all the EV regulations in one place. Okay, we've reached the last zoning chapter, 19.35. This chapter regulated multiple household districts, including RMM and RML, where you have higher residential uses today or higher intensity residential uses. We've incorporated some of the elements from this chapter into our new residential chapters. So we're proposing to repeal this one. And then finally, this ordinance is the official zoning map. It includes the final map refinements to implement residential 1 through residential 4 zones that you delineated during the comprehensive plan vision process. And then this is the list of the nine ordinances we just went through, which are up for adoption tonight if you are so inclined. So we can take any questions or turn it back to you, mayor and council members. I'll stand on this slide for discussion.
Very good. Thank you, Heidi. And Christie, great presentation and overview, a reminder of what we've been through for the last several months. Do we have any questions before we open up for public comment? I see Steve, Councilmember Woodard.
I don't know if he can.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm sorry, I was trying to figure out where the mute went, or excuse me, the button. You know, really just a philosophical question here for the team. Firstly, me back up, say what an amazing amount of work you've all done and very thoughtful, very clear this time. I don't know, I was over my head a couple of times back, but it's gotten more and more clear. With that in mind, and I don't know if this is fair, but I'd just love to hear your take on it, if you're willing. When you look at these nine chapters, from your take, which one really has, in your kind of expertise, the potential to move Mount Lake Terrace forward? I know you're going to say all nine, but I want to know, like, which one of all these that you had the chance to work on is really the one that's kind of the heart and soul of where we're headed, if you will?
Right, it's a great question. That would be Chapter 19.30. We covered this in the most slides. It's really the place where all of the the density is allowed to change. You're allowed to put more units on lots that have only allowed single family, and that will have the greatest impact. And then also the dimensional standards that need to go along with that to actually allow for those additional units. It'll it'll really have the potential to change quite a bit.
Thank you, I appreciate that answer.
Yeah, staff wholeheartedly agrees with that. It's 1930.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I just have a quick question.
In-house.
Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you.
Is that, Sonmore, go ahead.
Christie, I just have two questions, and the first one's really easy, and I know we've answered it before, but I just want to ask, the design standards that are going to be in place, does that ensure neighborhood compatibility? And I'm not even sure when they voted on the House bill, if they even took that into consideration.
I don't, insure is a strong word, but I would say that's definitely the intent, is that with the type of densities that the legislature is requiring, 19.32 is our attempt to try to make sure that we're doing the best job as this develops out to recognize adjacent properties with appropriate setbacks, landscaping, and design standards that speak to our community in general. So that's definitely the intent.
And then I just have one more follow-up question.
Sure.
I know somebody who has the potential of adding the most ADU that Mount Lake Terrace can have on their property. So I'm asking, so if she wants to listen to this, she can hear it, and so she might be able to put like at least three ADUs on her property, and she has three children. And the the ADUs stay with the homeowner? She can, can she sell those off to like her children?
So she can do up to two ADUs, and each one has to be a minimum of 200 square feet, that's building code, up to a maximum of 1,000 square feet. There are mechanisms for people to subdivide their property depending on the specifics of her situation, either through a short plat process, which is administrative, or there are mechanisms to what's happening in some other cities around the state condominiumizing. So essentially, the ownership of the unit can go to somebody else besides the property owner. So we can't require, like in our current code, we require owner to occupy the primary residence. We can no longer require that. So a lot of the requirements that we had previously in our code per the new state law, we can't do that. But there are a couple of different mechanisms depending on the situation where that would be possible.
So getting to the ADUs, like if she put it, she's got a huge lot. If she put them in the backyard, she'd have to have easements or something to, if, and say she didn't live in the house, to get to those properties in the back?
Yeah, I mean, you would have to have accessibility, absolutely, particularly if you divide subdivided, right? Or you, depending on, you'd have to get utilities back there, so you would have utility easements. We can't require parking for accessory dwelling units, so there wouldn't be that per se. But for utilities, or if it got to be where somebody was subdividing their property, then there, you would have to have easements over that other piece of property.
And then she asked me about insurance, like if she owned all of them, but I'm sure we've been doing that for in other cities, so that would be up to her calling the insurance.
Yeah.
She said, well, how much will my property or my insurance go up? Or how much will my taxes go up if I build all these properties? It'll increase my taxes by, and I'm like, I don't know.
I don't know either, but I'm saying yes and yes, it will increase her property taxes and it will increase her insurance, I'm sure, because, right, you have more to insure, and you would have more structures on that property. But that's something that she would have to, yeah, contact her insurance company and then try to get an idea assessment-wise as well of what that would look like.
And the one last question, if you remind me, if you live within a half a mile of the light rail, anywhere along Mount Lake Terrace on either side, you can build up to how many ADUs? I thought it was four.
No, that's more, it's it's not, it's, it varies, but if you're within a half-mile radius, we can't require parking. And yes, we have to allow up to four units, not necessarily accessory dwelling units, but you would have to make one of those units affordable in order to get that that density bonus. So like what Heidi was saying is, that's that one chapter we put in our code 3.96, which we have to report on every year, and you have to keep that, the rent for that as affordable for a 50-year time period.
And then it's any half a mile on either side.
Yep, it's a full radius. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Any other questions?
Councilmember Ryan would like.
Yes, Councilmember Ryan, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. To Christie, I'm sorry, I don't have all the specifics on my current agenda, which I did last time. So I had two questions. The first one is on, in 19.30, the vehicle infrastructure for something about electronic vehicles or charging stations.
Yes.
What's the specifics on that?
So we have a requirement in our our code right now of where if you're building a new structure, you have to have the means to hook up a, the power source, the 220-power to hook up for electric vehicle charging. You don't have to put the actual unit itself, but it has to be equipped that if somebody comes in the future, that they could put a unit on there to charge. And I don't know the exact year that you guys adopted that as a council, but it it was during the Shane Hope period. I'll say that in those years, but the city was one of the first to require that capacity for electric vehicles if someone chooses to do that.
Thank you, that sounds really good. And number two, on 19.12, no, was it, if I understood it correctly, no parking for, or no parking standards for affordable housing? What's that? Could you specify, please?
Yeah, so under the requirements of state law, there's certain uses that we can't require parking for. So as Heidi indicated, if it is deemed a affordable housing unit, we can't require parking. If it's an accessory dwelling unit, we can't require parking. And we have that radius around the transit center, which in in some cases, we can't require parking. So that's basically what is state law and a requirement for all cities, so.
Onto that affordable housing. When we're working with contractors and doing apartments, and we're giving them, if they do, what, 20% affordable housing per unit, what's the parking on that? Is that involved with this, or is this separate?
This is a separate situation. You're referring to the multifamily tax exemption. So in some of those cases, like in town center, that wouldn't be impacted. But in the case of where you're doing something outside of town center zoning, it would be applicable for us not to require parking. Right now, for the multifamily tax exemption, we're only making that applicable to town center, but I'm sure this is going to be a discussion point when we work through the housing action plan. So we'll, you'll definitely, I'm sure, have a conversation about that and what that looks like.
Okay, so to clarify then, if it's outside town center, we haven't had the discussion yet on the parking requirements for like apartments, because I thought it was like 1.5 per unit, but I'm questioning the affordable housing units.
Yeah, so affordable, it would be zero for the rest of parking requirements. You're looking at one parking space per unit now with the new code requirements. Straight across, so doesn't doesn't matter what the bedroom or how many bedrooms or anything, we're looking at one space outside of town center for residential, with the exception of accessory dwelling units, affordability, and I forgot my third one.
That's okay. What happened to the 1.5 we used to be talking about?
That 1.5 was in our code, but new state law has basically trumped that.
So Washington State.
Excuse me.
Yeah, preempted, thank you. Better word.
So Washington State has taken away our zoning of 1.5 parking units to one. Is that correct?
I would say yes, it's a it's a requirement.
It's a requirement, and therefore it's a subtraction, 1.5 minus 0.5 equaling 1.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's a subtraction.
Correct.
Due to state mandates.
Correct.
Okay, that's important, I need to know that. All right, thank you very much for your help.
You bet.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ryan. Any other questions? All right, it looks like we are ready to move into the public hearing. Assuming so, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open public hearing.
Thank you, we've got a motion. We can, a second. Very good, we got a motion, a second. Jennifer, you got, who made those?
No. Can you repeat that, please?
Councilmember Sonmore, I believe, made the motion to, for the open public hearing, and we had a second from, is it, Councilmember Ryan?
Woodard.
Woodard, Councilmember Woodard, thank you, Councilmember Woodard. All right. There we go.
Thank you.
All those in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Very good, the public hearing is now open. Jennifer, do we have anybody signed up for the public hearing?
Not for this topic.
Okay. So nobody in the audience has signed up for it?
No, we do.
And nobody signed up online, so.
We do have two people.
We should, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, we have two people, they were not signed up, but they would like to speak on this topic.
Okay, very good. Let's open the floor to hear from them.
Please state your name and city of residence, and you'll have five minutes at the podium.
Kimberly Guadalupe, resident of Mount Lake Terrace. I just would like to ask with these new new codes being adopted and what's coming down from state legislature, I'm understanding and I'm hearing about the parking regarding ADUs and if it's affordable housing and things like that. I'm personally going through a situation with a home business occupation license, and I want to know how parking is affected for that and how that's incorporated.
Right now, there's been no changes to the home occupation portions of our code for parking. We will be looking at that moving forward in the next few months for taking a look at our home occupations, but right now, that's not a part of this endeavor for middle housing.
How would that affect if you build an ADU? Say you do a garage conversion, as an example. How would that affect if that person is like a real estate professional and they are being required to have a home business license occupation? Do they then have to comply with the parking or not because it's an ADU, as an example?
Well, I would say those are two different things. If it's an accessory dwelling unit, one, one set of provisions apply. If it's a home occupation, then there's separate requirements for a home occupation.
Okay, and then can you confirm what the home occupation currently is and when you guys will be looking at that portion? You came here tonight because the city told me you guys were doing that today, so.
Oh, the, the, I think you're referring to the requirement for how much parking you need for your actual, what you'll need for your residence versus your home occupation, which is going to affect how much parking is now required for your residence. So it will affect overall, but they're kind of two separate things. For home occupation, we'll be looking at as as part of our 2026 work work plan, so starting in January.
For the home occupation side of it?
Correct, yeah.
And can you confirm what that is right now? Do you know, or?
I don't know offhand what we require for home occupations, no.
Okay, but so January is when?
We'll start work on that, yep.
Thank you. All right, next up.
Can you please state your name for the record? You have five minutes.
Yeah, good evening. Steve Mossman, resident of Mount Lake Terrace. I did have a prepared statement, but I'm actually going to speak a little bit more from the heart tonight because of just a couple of issues that I think are really kind of paramount. One of the things I will read is from House Bill 1110, which was incorporated into RCW 36.70 Alpha Point 635. And it is concerning the number of other population requirements in order to mandate two units per housing. And in Section 1 Subsection C, it says, "For cities with a population of less than 25,000 that are within a contiguous urban growth area with the largest city in a county with a population of more than 275,000." My reading is that that city has to be 275, which is Everett, which does not reach that level. Only then does it require two dwelling units per house or per lot. My concern, as being a resident for about nine years now, but being involved in the South County area for close to 30. but being involved in the South County area for close to 30, lived just outside of the city, and has raised our kids here, had them swimming at the pavilion, attending church in Mount Lake Terrace. We kind of felt like this was a place where we had established before we circumstances moved us out to Snohomish for a number of years, but then we moved back. I'm looking at this city and thinking throughout my entire tenure in the Snohomish County area, this being a residential city that met the needs of families. And families don't want to live in apartment houses. They want to have a backyard. They want to have, be able to have their kids go out and use the swing set in their backyard, not have to walk six to 10 blocks through the local park in order to have their kids play outside. And, and I see Mount Lake Terrace moving in an area that is, to me, looking more and more like Seattle. Where you've got high rises here, you've got apartment buildings over there, you've got duplexes, fourplexes, sixplexes. No more single family housing. And I ran across the study here a while back that showed Mount Lake Terrace currently of incorporated cities in Snohomish County is the highest density in population. There's four other non-incorporated areas that are higher, but we have a higher denser, denser population than Everett. We have a higher density population than Seattle does. I think we're getting out of hand here and requiring every single lot in this city to be eligible for more than one dwelling unit on a property. We need to keep an atmosphere in this city being amenable to families, people who want to own a piece of property, people who want a place where they can go out and relax in their backyard and not have to worry about what the neighbors are doing next door, literally through the next wall. I would encourage you to at least if possible, review Chapter 19.3, pull it off the list for tonight, and make sure that you're not jumping into something that you think the state law has said and it hasn't. Make sure that if you're going to start forcing the residents of Mount Lake Terrace into stack them and pack them, make sure that we're legally required to do so. Because the way I read it, the way I've showed it to three other people with experience in this area, it's not required because this city isn't big enough. And for 1944 projections by the county, it's, well, they're requiring over 18% increase in population between now and then. And Mount Lake Terrace hasn't grown over 1,000 in the last 10 years. I think this city is already at a place where it's got enough population and you have to really be careful before you turn it into another little mini Seattle. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Do we have any other comments?
No one else has signed up in person or online for this topic.
Okay, thank you. Then we are ready to close the public hearing. And do I have a motion to close public hearing?
To close public hearing.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Very good. And Jennifer, you got that? Councilmember Sonmore motion? And who, who gets credit? Councilmember Page or Ryan?
Ryan said it first.
Okay, here we go. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
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 So hesitant. We can keep it open if you want. All those opposed? Okay, motion is approved. We have closed the public hearing. So now we are ready to take action on the middle housing codes. I am looking for, entertain a motion from anybody to put the, put the middle housing codes amendments on the floor for discussion. Do I have a motion to adopt the recommended code amendments for middle housing? Councilmember Murray, come on down.
All right. Thanks, Mayor Protem. I move that we move. I, I move that we approve the recommendation of the approval from the Planning Commission. You have to read all that. Do we need all of the attachments included?
Yeah, I think we can just say we've moved to adopt the recommended code amendments for middle housing as provided.
Yep.
Okay, all right, great. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And Jennifer, you got those?
I believe it's Murray and Woodard.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you. Well done. All right. We have a motion on the floor for discussion. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Well, I'll let.
I know. Can you see us?
Sonmore go first. I'll go second.
All right, Councilmember Sonmore.
So I just want to have some discussion and closing on this. So Kristi, I'm going to turn to you for some questions here. It is a hard pill to swallow with the population increase and the building of Mount Lake Terrace, because I've lived here since the early 60s and I've seen a huge change in Mount Lake Terrace. And I do know at one time, Mount Lake Terrace was the densest city in Washington State. And our former mayor used to say, "We're the second densest." And that was just not that long ago. So we understand how dense our city is and understand what the state is putting upon us. And we understand with, understanding how expensive things are getting. I had the same comment of everybody wants a backyard. And I was told as I got older, I would begin to understand how that would change. And I kind of do and I kind of don't, but it comes down to a personal preference. And I've seen people live in apartments and get married and have a family and they want a backyard. And so I understand all that too. And I always lean more towards that, you know, giving room and space because more people, more crime and all of that. But my arguments always kind of fall in a moot point. And so that's where I'm going to turn to Kristi on. Can you just kind of summarize what we have to do as a city? How our population has increased over the years? And just kind of summarize and maybe address, I'm sorry, I'm looking. I know it was from House Bill 1110 and RCW 36 concerning population requirements. And I know we're about to go over 25,000. So if you could maybe address those so we can kind of.
Sure. So I would just say that this work has been going on for about four years and starts with the county and working with the state for population projections. So there is a lot of work that's the precursor to us adopting the comprehensive plan. When we went through the comprehensive plan, we had some decision points to make of how we were going to meet the legislation, the multiple pieces of legislation. And because we were just under 25,000 people and knew that we would exceed that population, there was conversation with both the Planning Commission and City Council to say, "We're going to exceed that," which we actually have exceeded it now, 25,000 people. And thus, we are going to proactively go to what's called Tier 2. There's Tier 1, 2, and 3. And so with that, we're following those requirements of Tier 2, which is coordinated and consistent with what we adopted in our comp plan. So we adopt the comp plan, we set those standards, and then we come back and we change our zoning to comply with the land use designations and the goals and policies in our comp plan. So I would say that decision point was made last October. We're putting the finishing touches on implementing part of that zoning tonight. So we're consistent with those decisions that have been previously made by City Council.
And Kristi, can you remind me, over the next 20 years, we're not going to be doubling our population, but I think it, I wanted to say it goes up to about 48,000 is what the Growth Management Act is looking at.
I believe we're just under 34,000. And again, those are, are just projections, right? So they take a look at how the city has grown over time and assign population numbers to that. The city will go back and we're required to do a major update of our comp plan at least every 10 years. And so in fact, as we change and grow and depending on what occurs during, you know, that 20-year time period, then the city will need to adjust those projections and providing for utilities and water and sewer capacity and those type of things. So we don't just adopt and let it sit, right? We adopt and then we take a look at how we're progressing year to year if we need to adjust and make changes as we move forward. So simply projections of which we plan, we plan from.
And one time you told me, because I kind of, you know, was wondering how in the world could our city even imagine growing that much? But I think you said to me, and maybe you could correct me if I'm wrong, is that it can't happen all at once. It's going to happen in stages. So with businesses and homes and looking at parking, because, you know, parking is going to get smaller and smaller.
Sure.
So I worry about the people who have businesses in their home and I worry about the people, you know, thinking, well, I'm not going to have a backyard. But it's not, it really can't happen all at once because you said with utilities and things like that, it's going to have to grow kind of in stages. And it will have to also grow as generations leave. And maybe you can.
Yeah, I think, I think we've seen that in all plans that we put forthright. We, we put the plan together, Town Center, other comprehensive planning documents, et cetera. That's a planning place, but as we've seen with different plans that we've done, just because we allow something doesn't mean it's going to occur. Just, you know, there we go and it's, it's all built out. It'll be the same for this. I think what we've been trying to accomplish is being mindful of that there is a desire for affordability and also a variety of housing types for different people at different stages in their life and being able to be affordable. There's still allowance for people to do a single family. There's no prohibition against that. Nobody is made to develop their property, right? So it's, if they want to develop their property, if they want to build an accessory dwelling unit, here's the rules. So I think that's important.
Yeah, and I just reiterate that nobody has to sell because we're changing the codes. It's up to the personal owner. We're not forcing anybody to do anything.
Correct.
You don't have to have ADUs in your backyard. You don't have to have four. You don't have, so I think that's important for people to remember. It kind of gives you some relief because it is a lot to take in.
Sure.
And Councilwoman Ryan, you brought up how the state is kind of overriding some of the city's rules and that, you know, took our breath away because that doesn't really happen. And that was something that we feel that the city still should have control over. And that's the hard pill to swallow, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Councilmember Ryan, you were next up.
My questions have been answered. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Councilmember Murray, go ahead.
Are we, is this our comment period, Mayor Protem?
This is, yes, this is our discussion period. Please go ahead.
All right. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody involved in this process. We are at a, a lot, many of us who are not there tonight are at a session for cities across the state. And we had a session this morning that one of the things they talked about was housing costs. And one of the things that I hadn't, I mean, I, I think we all know housing costs have gone up and it is less and less affordable for people to be able to put down roots in the communities where they want to live. I think particularly as somebody with kids that are near and dear to my heart as I think about their future and what that might mean for them. And I think it was particularly startling to hear the Snohomish County numbers. So back in 2015, which I know most of us have lived here longer than that, right? So, so we, we experienced a world where 80% of the folks, or no, 75% of the folks in Snohomish County who bought homes were at 80% of the area median income or below. That has shifted to where in 2024, only 6% of the people that were able to buy homes in our county. And we know that we are more expensive than many areas of our county. We're at 80% of area median income or below. Like the ability to be able to put down roots in communities where you want to live has become less and less accessible, except for those who are the wealthiest in our communities. And I just, I'm proud of us. We started off as a community where affordability was an important aspect of, of why our community was developed and how it was developed. And I, I just, I appreciate all of the intentionality to both embrace the community that we are, but also the community that we are becoming because really we know that it is the people that make our community amazing and ensuring that there are options that allow folks of all different socioeconomic backgrounds to be able to, to live in our community and continue to live in our community. I just, I, I'm very grateful. I think this is a great proposal. I think it's a great body of work. I think it is consistent with our vision in addition to the, the requirements that put, that were put forth by the state. I also think that this is aligned with, with our goals and vision as a council. And so I will just say thank you to all of the folks involved. Thank you to all the community members who gave input. And I, I am excited to hopefully have people have options that don't necessarily look like the options that are available today. And so excited to see kind of what the next year brings and revisit it as needed to, to continue to iterate. But just big appreciation to everybody involved. I think this is a great piece of code and I'm excited to move forward.
Good. Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Councilmember Page, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, I'm sitting here and, and taking all of this in. And this, and, and I felt that I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to a whole bunch of people. And, and it starts with, I think, like did some of the community members who have come forward, expressed the way that they felt about either for or against what was going on, these plans. When I first got into this seat, you were well into this discussion. And at the beginning, it was a blur. I think I was just as confused as some of the other residents, you know, as trying to understand this whole middle housing plan. But for not for the, the work that you have done, Heidi and, and Kristi and those that worked with you, you know, you've made this much, much more understandable, much, much more reasonable to, to want to do this. And so I thank you for that work. I know you've been thanked every week that you've come. And I don't think that anyone's just saying it to be saying it because it has gotten a lot more better to understand some of the, maybe the ambiguous things that were in the things ahead of time. You know, members of council asked for something a little bit more tremory and you did that. So, you know, not just for me. You know, I, I think I could probably speak for, you know, others who wondered where all this was going. I say thank you. But I especially want to thank our council members because, um, for your due diligence and looking for understanding and clarity and, and some movement so that we could get to this place. And I guess that's what I hope the community sees in the, in the council, that willingness to, you know, make you have to come back and back and back, you know, for, with explanation because that's what you did. And, you know, Kristi, thank you for, you know, summing that up. Just, you know, October was when, you know, I've been following the comp plan just from my old seat and I know that a lot of that came in front of us. And, but in October, you know, the council said, "Let's go." And so I think that's, that's important to remember that you didn't have a whole lot of time to get to this point, but in October, they said, "Let's get it going." So, you know, I just want to thank everyone that, that's helped me. If it may, helped make it clear for me, I know you helped make it clear for a lot of other people. And, and I think that this city, as, you know, we're at a conference right now where, you know, people are talking about things like this. And I think, you know, the, the work that is, that all of you have put into this is going to allow others to see, you know, what due diligence looks like and how a city that's in 20 years expecting 13,000 plus more residents, 7,600 more units to, can get it done if, if all the questions. and our, our ass answered and like you said, we take it, you know, a piece at a time and not think that it all has to happen at, 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 at once, because it doesn't. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Any final comments or discussion before Councilmember, uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor Matsumoto Wright?
Yes, I just wanted to just put my two cents worth in because this, this is a long time coming and one of, you know, PSRC once said that when they make the projections for the population, it, it always seems like maybe they're not gonna hit it and, and they've always hit it. If their numbers have always been correct. So, if they say that we're gonna be 34,000, I believe them now because they've hit every other milestone on that. And, um, for someone like me who's been working on this from the very, very beginning, we're finally starting to see how we can get, um, those people housed, because if they're, if we're gonna grow to 34,000, we don't have that many units. And, um, we got a light rail station. There's a lot of things that, that, uh, people are moving here just because we have that light rail station and we need to house, house them somehow. And we, we need to have the units available so that, uh, when the units are there, then they become more affordable. And I know it's a hard thing for some people to, to realize and to think, but, um, right now there, it's not affordable because there's not enough units and people are having to pay so much over, over what they can afford because they're, they're, um, competing with other people who have more money. So, I'm really, really proud of what we've done and I'm, um, and Christie, you and your team, Heidi too, uh, thank you because I know that this was a huge, huge lift. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Matsumoto Wright. All right. If we have no further discussion, then we have a motion on the table to adopt the recommended code amendments for middle housing. All those, I'll pause one last time just in case. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, I will echo the comments made that this was a tremendously heavy lift. And, and you, you know, we talked about the, the numbers coming from PSRC. I've been involved, as you know, on the executive board with PSRC, adopting the Vision 2050, uh, been involved in this from the Snohomish County tomorrow, from, uh, uh, from Snohomish County City's perspective, uh, and, and then obviously involved with, uh, the comprehensive plan update and, and you've heard me wax on and on about housing, the need to address the housing needs of our community for a long time, uh, but I recognize what a tremendous lift this was. Christie and Heidi and entire, entire team, uh, really have done an amazing job getting us where we are and we're not done yet. We've got the Housing Action Plan, uh, coming up next to, to further our, our discussion and, and address needs of housing in our community. But great work tomorrow, really appreciate you guys to get us where we are now, so thank you. Okay, with that, we are ready to move on to the next item, which is the, uh, review, public hearing and vote on the ordinance adopting the six-year transportation improvement plan. With that, we've got our traffic engineer, John Merrick. John?
Mayor Protem?
Supposed to give him a minute to transition.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Councilmember Ryan.
Could we get a three-minute recess?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sure, while we're transitioning, uh, we can go ahead and take a, uh, why don't we make it a four-minute break? Come back at eight, uh, eight, 18.
Okay, thank you.
Does that sound? Okay, it is eight nineteen. We are back in order. John, carry us into the, uh, discussion on the six-year transportation improvement plan. Go ahead.
Okay, um, just, um, thank you, Mayor, uh, Mayor Protem and council members. Um, I'm John Merrick. I'm the city traffic engineer, um, talking about the, uh, six-year transportation improvement program. Uh, purpose of this review really is a, it's a quick recap of my, uh, presentation earlier, just talking about the, uh, six-year, uh, TIP. Um, this is for just council consideration, for the public hearing and public comment, um, but ultimately I'm hoping for the adoption of the 2026, 2031 six-year, uh, transportation improvement program. The tip is, uh, consistent with council goals, um, growing our vibrant community, responsible governance to ensure desired level of service and environmental sustainability and resiliency. Um, just a quick, the legislative history, the last, uh, the, the tip is, um, adopted every year, the update is adopted every year, so the last time this was, uh, um, brought to, for legislative review was, uh, June, or yeah, June 20th, 2024, when we adopted the 2025, 2030 six-year tip. Um, and then I presented to you, to the council, um, just earlier this, this month. Um, just as a quick summary, uh, the, um, transportation improvement program, it's a, it's a short-range planning document. It's a list of projects and programs that the, uh, city plans to pursue over the next six years to, um, address, uh, uh, infrastructure needs and community needs. Um, we're required by state law to, um, um, develop and, um, update our tip every year. Um, when we, uh, adopt it, it, um, the new tip replaces a previous tip. Um, and then we submit it to the state and it gets incorporated to the state's transportation improvement program and it allows us to be eligible for, uh, grant funding, state and federal grant funding. Um, oops, sorry, let me go back. Uh, last time I talked, um, I provided in appendix A, uh, a list of projects and associated funding sources. Um, the, the, the funding, um, sources are consistent with our 2025, 2026 CIP budget and it's a mix of, um, annual revenue sources and, um, some one-time supplemental, uh, uh, sources. The annual sources include, uh, transportation impact fees, our, uh, REIT fees, state gas tax, um, transportation benefit district fees, um, that we collect. And then some of the one-time grants are we, are Department of Commerce grants that we, that we've received. Um, and then we're, um, actively seeking other funding sources, which include, um, a $5 million, uh, Wash Dot Mobility Grant and we currently have a, um, application in for a $23.3 million, uh, build grant. So, those revenue sources go to fund, uh, a variety of programs and, and projects. Um, quick list of the, the programs that we currently have on the tip, um, our street overlay program, um, our signal rehabilitation program where we, uh, um, uh, replace a controller and cabinet yearly, um, our ADA sidewalk, uh, um, program, which goes to construct sidewalks and curb ramps, um, our bicycle program, primarily restriping or, or, um, installing new channelization for bike, uh, for bike lanes. And then our transportation, traffic safety, our neighborhood traffic safety program, which goes towards, um, small spot and, uh, improvement projects to address, uh, community concerns on neighborhood streets, um, primarily that's, uh, such as speeding concerns, so. And then some of our larger projects include, uh, Main Street Phase Two. Um, as I mentioned before, that's, um, a project that we're, uh, seeking, currently seeking funding for, um, and then as well as, uh, Main Street Phase Three, which is just a, um, design-only, uh, project. And then for capital, additional capital improvements, it's a, it's a range of, uh, nine other type, nine other projects. Um, these can be, uh, kind of looked at, uh, through, um, a variety of categories. Um, we have five pedestrian, um, five pedestrian bike projects. Um, those include our 48th Avenue West sidewalk and bike lane project from 236 to 244th, um, our two, uh, 244th reconstruction project, which would put in a bike lane from, um, or excuse, excuse me, would, yeah, put in a bike lane from, uh, Cedar Way to, uh, 56th. Um, sidewalk project on 214th, kind of filling in some missing, uh, sidewalk pieces, uh, sidewalk project for 52nd, um, Avenue, uh, Southwest, or West, um, connecting to the , uh, Montlake, uh, Elementary School. And then, uh, reconfiguration of 44th Avenue West between 2, 12th and 226 to, um, implement a, a bike lane and, uh, road diet to help reduce speeds and, um, improve safety. Uh, it also includes three intersection safety projects. Um, this includes, um, the intersection of 220th and 58th for a roundabout traffic circle, um, 212th and 48th, looking at a signal, either a pedestrian signal or full signal at that location. Um, and then, uh, um, uh, revising the, the rapid or reci- rectangular rapid flash beacon at 236th and 58th to a full signal. Um, and then the final two projects are, um, uh, street improvement projects and that's the re, uh, resurfacing of 220th from, uh, the interurban trail to, um, 52nd and then, as I mentioned, the Main Street project. So, it's, the, the, the plan is really just the list of projects associated with it and that's, um, uh, in your packet you have, um, uh, attached to the ordinance for the, for the program is Exhibit A, which kind of then identifies all the, the various projects and the funding sources. So, um, just a real quick on how that's dispersed across the city. Here's a, a map that shows the various locations of the projects that are on the, the current, um, tip or the, uh, proposed tip. Um, and with that, I, you know, uh, staff recommendation is that council, um, approve the 2026, 2031 transportation improvement program. So, with that, I'll just, I'll open it up for any questions or comments.
Very good. Thank you, John. Do we have any questions before we open the public hearing?
Councilmember Ryan does?
Yes, Councilmember Ryan, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, on the, looks like project number eight, which is 220th and 58th, uh, possible roundabout. I'm, I'm assuming that when we finally get to that, which is number eight.
Uh huh.
That's gonna be a while. Um, and cost, I'm sure that's up for research, review and discussion.
Oh, you're right. So, I think the, with that project, really what we'd like to do is the first phase would actually be doing a, a formalized study, kind of really looking at how both, either of those options would operate, um, pros and cons, the constructability of it. Um, once we kind of, uh, kind of settled on a preferred option, we would then come to council and kind of let you know the findings of that study before we kind of really started moving forward with trying to seek, seek funding for it.
Awesome, thank you.
Very good. Thank, thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Councilmember Murray, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and thank you, John, for the, the presentation. Um, similar to, to Councilmember Ryan's question, my question is similar for the unfunded projects that before any of, I know that is a list full of projects, um, that, that unfortunately we don't have funding for.
Exactly.
Um, at least currently, would each of those come back to us for, for review prior to those moving forward as well?
Um, I think what we would, uh, do would be, we would be looking for, um, trying to develop a, a funding strategy. As we got that funding strategy, we would come back to you with, uh, kind of the scope of the project to see if that scope is in alignment with, uh, council and community goals and make sure we're still kind of, uh, um, moving in the right direction on that, on that particular project.
Perfect, thank you.
We're good. Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Anyone? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I moved that we open the public hearing.
Very good. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now open. Jennifer, do we have anybody signed up to, uh, give testimony for our public hearing?
Yes, we do have one who registered to speak online tonight. That's Kirk Ishizaki. You have five minutes to speak.
Very good, thank you. Uh, Kirk, go ahead.
Hi, I'm, uh, my name is, uh, Soichiro Ishizaki, representing, uh, West Plaza LLC. Uh, hello, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council members. We received the city's response to our opposition to including Main Street Phase Three in the tip, public comment submitted on June 5th, and it does not address our concerns. We do not understand why the city would seek funding to design a street project that you do not plan to build, especially without required analyses. The city's response letter stated that the work performed to date on the 57th Street design is not a preliminary design. Quote, "A line on a map is not preliminary design and merely identifies the project in a general typology," end quote. We object to the semantic treatment of 57th. Conveniently renaming the 57th design work in 2024 to Main Street Phase Three does not all of a sudden exempt it from business displacement review. We can plainly see with our own eyes the various plans and designs under the Main Street project since 2007, which include 57th. Quote, "This project was prioritized back in 2007 and reaffirmed through two updates of the Town Center Subarea Plan and Comprehensive Plan," end quote. Please understand that the, that official city documents that show 57th running straight through the Diamond Knot Brew Pub is harmful to West Plaza, our tenants and the City of Mount Lake Terrace community. It has caused us economic harm in the past year, causes current economic harm and will cause future economic harm. Per our attorney's evaluation, we believe that the city has not undergone the required business displacement risk review to include Main Street Phase Three design work in the TIP, per policy CF dash four dot one zero. Further, the step of mitigating displacement risk and minimizing impacts to private property owners has not been performed to, for initial Main Street design under policy TR dash four point one one. To state that displacement risk analysis is not required before requesting budget authorization is harming us. We want the city to acknowledge that the displacement analysis and supporting transportation analysis are legally required before the project moves forward. The transportation analysis is required to show nexus with city goals and proportionality of the need for private land or impact fees for this street. We would like the city to commit to conducting these analyses before deciding whether it should be a public project or the responsibility of a future developer. We have also heard support from some council members for exploring design options that minimize business impact. We would like the city to commit to exploring at least one option with a walking and bike path, but no cars, when 57th moves into the design process. We believe this approach without cars will have the least impact on our property and businesses. Please work with us to ensure our local businesses remain successfully operating and serving the Mount Lake Terrace, uh, community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Uh, all right. Do we have anybody else signed up?
No one else has signed up in person or for remote comment.
And nobody else in the audience wishing to say something?
No, that is correct.
Okay, well, then we have, uh, had our public hearing, uh, would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close public hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
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 All of us opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. With that, do we have, uh, a motion to put on the table? I'm looking for a motion to adopt the six-year transportation improvement plan, 26 through 31.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Councilmember Page?
All right, I'm gonna give this a shot here. I make a motion that we adopt the 2026, 2031 six-year, um, transportation improvement plan. I make a motion that we adopt the 2026-2031 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan as stated in the presentation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second was Councilmember, was that Councilmember Sonmore?
Yes.
Very good. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
On, speaking of 57th Street running straight through the Diamond Knot Brewing and a possible option with a walking and a bike path there. I know our design is only when someone that owns the property and all that around there wants to do this. And that's why we have it in Phase Three. But we keep having business owners that own the property there that are complaining about this in the Phase Three. So I'm either, I would like a discussion on either eliminating the 57th Street design to this recommendation, or possibly we adopt it or make an amendment for a walking and bike path only. So I'd like to propose that for a discussion before I make an amendment.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Ryan.
I have a comment.
Do we, Councilmember Sonmore?
There's, this goes back until 2007, and it's been on that docket ever since. And it's coming to us now. We did have a lot of discussion on why we wanted that there. And we have talked about it for a long time. It's coming to us now because there is a threat here or a pose on here. I don't think the council has all the background to why. And right now, I believe it is not funded. And so it would come to us before, and then they could also have a say then. But there, there's a lot of reasons why we put that in there. And it's for this, all this future growth that we've been talking about and been mandated to have. And so at this point, I would just leave it the way it is and vote on it then. It'll come up again, and we'll have more discussion then. But the council does not have all that information tonight to form that decision.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Any further discussion? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, I would echo what Councilmember Sonmore just said. It was one of the reasons I asked about projects coming back before us as part of that unfunded list. And so I'm happy to, to continue discussions in the future. And I wouldn't support an amendment tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Yeah, and I guess I, I would ask, John, can you just reiterate what you had, the, the letter that you had sent over? I know that was, there was, that was in responses, their first concerns they iterated. And Kirk has continued his, to share his concerns. And I think it's worth noting that we have put in place some policies to ensure that we do, as this project, if this project were to move forward and if it were to get funded in the future, we do have policies in place to ensure a process, talking about displacement, about how the design might be, including things like pedestrian and bike only, including things like, you know, again, how that's going to be designed, including things like just potential business displacement and a full public process involved if this 57th were to move forward in any capacity. Just again, just, if you can just share, John, a little bit to remind us what we have adopted, what policies we've already adopted to put in place to give assurances to West Plaza property owners of, about their concerns. That we, we have heard and, and have, and are doing everything we can to address.
Good evening, Mayor Protem. This is Carolyn Hope, just helping John out here a little bit. Just want to reiterate that we adopted some comprehensive plan policies in response to our neighbors at West Plaza's concerns during last fall's debates. And those basically say that the city will not use eminent domain to purchase that property for the road, and it will be up to the developer and owner of that property to develop that property. So the road won't be built through West Plaza unless the owner decides to. And the design process is intended to help the city make sure that the road or the pedestrian, pedestrian facility, whatever we decide is going to be there, is in a, is aligned properly and that any utilities that we need are designed during that process and that we've determined the width of that right-of-way so that we don't have a jagged road, per se. And also that we have some design standards for those developers to use through the process. The other thing I would say is that the displacement strategies, some of which were evaluated in the previous subarea planning when we had the Economic Development, Economic Vitality Team in place. I wasn't here then. I think Councilmember Sonmore was involved with that. And we have some new policies in the comp plan related to displacement, but they come into play as the project is getting ready for construction or there's a development agreement on the table between the owner and developer of the property. Is there anything you'd like to add, John?
No, I think you got that pretty well. Thanks.
One more comment?
Very good. Yeah, no, thank you, Carolyn, for, for that overview. Appreciate that. Councilmember Sonmore, go ahead.
Oh, thank, and thank you, Carolyn, for stating that. I think that was summarized well for the council. But stating that, I know a few years ago, some business owners from the Plaza came to me and said, "What are you doing?" And I kind of explained what was going on then. And I guess I'm kind of confused why it keeps on coming back to us if we have already said we won't use the takings of the property and it will be up to the owner because it wasn't that strict before because we looked at all the displacement and everything a long time ago. And that's why I guess I'm a little confused on why this keeps on coming back because I do not want, and I believe our whole council, we don't want our businesses to go away. We're not threatening them. But when the person came up to me, it was like, "The city is threatening us, and we're going to have to move." And I'm like, "What are you talking about?" And so I, I think there's maybe some miscommunication here. We don't want our businesses to go away, but we do have a plan in place for the future. So I'm just a little confused on what's being said to the business owners over there, that they keep on feeling that they're being threatened, that we want them to move. And that's not the case at all. So I'm just putting it out there for council comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Any further discussion?
Mayor Protem, may I add?
Yes. Yes, Councilmember Ryan, please go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Carolyn, for the clarification and Councilmember Sonmore for helping with saying that we want our businesses stay. And that's exactly what we have. I do have, just backing up our city manager and deputy, deputy city manager, something is EV 3.5 removes the city's ability to use eminent domain. And then we have EV 2.8, which addresses displacement of businesses. And then the comp plan provides a series of implantation strategies for policy EV 2.8, including but not limited to working with the developer on a development agreement, which we're not anywhere near, a business relocation, business promotion, many others. So it just sounds like we've got in place here where this would not be threatening to the business owner or anybody right around that area. So it seems like he'd be safe. And it sounds like a win-win situation. Is that correct?
Yes, it's really in the hands of the owner of the property, as we've talked about earlier, to decide to redevelop. And redevelopment is the trigger to building the road.
Great. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Ah, there we are. Councilmember Woodard, go ahead.
Yeah, I really appreciate, thank you, Mayor Protem. I've really appreciated this conversation. I too am similarly opposed of like, this keeps coming back. What am I missing? What am I missing? So I realized, here's a question I haven't asked, because it's about redevelopment. So if the current owner decides to redevelop, are they bound to our build the road clause? Because I thought it was if it transfers hands. So they can do whatever they still want on their property, and they're not going to be subjected to build this road. But if you sell that property and that person wants to redevelop, then they would be subjected to that. So I guess I'd love to hear, is that a false distinction I'm making? Maybe that's actually why it keeps coming back to us, is that I'm missing that no, anybody who does redevelopment would have to do this.
Yes, anybody who redevelops the property. And there is a, there's definitely a measure of how much, like, say, renovation occurs on the property. But if there was a complete redevelopment of the property, certainly that would trigger the road. And so it's really up to them how to redesign the property. Yep.
Yeah, but to be fair, if the current people were to completely redevelop, they themselves would be displacing the owners or, excuse me, the businesses. So that's not really a concern, I guess, is what I'm asking. If, if they're here telling us the concern is you're pushing our businesses away, well, if they were to then redevelop the whole thing themselves or hit this threshold, odds are that would be the displacement they're telling us we're forcing them into.
Yes.
Right? So, so I guess that's my way of saying, so really it comes down to, well, is, what's the owner's plan? Which it seems like it's always been the case that they're going to keep it. But we haven't talked about, are they going to redevelop it? Like, we'd love to have a better parking lot. Let's, we're gonna start calling things out. I almost got run over sitting at a restaurant there, right? I brought that up by several of these meetings ago. So like, I'm not saying anything I haven't said before, but it's like, there's a lot of stuff that could be redeveloped over there, but that doesn't trigger, build us a new road, right?
I don't have the details of how much redevelopment would trigger the road, but there is a threshold that Christie's group could help us figure out. But yes, I think that there is a lot of opportunity for the owners of the property to, you know, design the site in different ways that could be phased so that the businesses could be retained. We've talked about those options with them. They could, they could master plan the property and then do a development agreement with the city. And through that agreement, we could come up with some of those other tools that we talked about earlier in the policy language about how we can support the business, the businesses in retaining their visibility in the community during construction and so forth.
Yes. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. Any further discussion? Okay, I will call for the question then. We are voting to adopt the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we have adopted the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan and will certainly continue to work with everybody involved with those projects as they come forward. All right, with that, we are moving on. Again, thank you, John and team, for all the work that you put into updating our Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. Appreciate that. That is an ongoing effort, but always a heavy lift. So appreciate all the work that's gone into that. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, can I just ask a quick question?
Going to have a review, public hearing, and vote on an ordinance interlocal agreement for the Commute Trip Reduction Plan. And that is still with John. Our traffic engineer, John Merrick, please continue.
Okay. Now, just give me a minute to figure out how to pull up that, that presentation. Let's see, how do I get out of this one? I see the share. Oh, here we go. I got it. Oops. There it goes. And, oops. This one. It's a whole process. You would think I'd have this by now. Uh, let's see, and then I go share here. Oops. All right, sorry. I gotcha.
A lot of these things, and everybody's struggling with this part, so.
How do I get rid of that?
Escape.
There you go. And then come down here. All right. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. Okay. All right, so now I'll be talking about the 2025-2029 Commute Trip Reduction Plan. Again, let's see if I can get rid of this real quick. Purpose of this presentation is just a quick recap of the presentation I did earlier this month on the, on the plan. This is for council consideration, for the public hearing and comment, and then ultimately for the adoption of the 2025-2029 Commute Trip Reduction Plan. The CTR is consistent with the following council goals: Responsible Governance to Ensure desired Level of Service and Environmental Sustainability and Resiliency. Legislative history, the last time the Commute Trip Reduction Plan was brought to council was in February 21st of 2017, where we adopted the 2017-2019 Plan. Okay, just a real quick recap of the Commute Trip Reduction Plan. It's, we're required by state law to have and implement a Commute Trip Reduction Plan. This is to help meet state, the state's goals on reducing carbon congestion and carbon emissions. The plan applies to affected employers, which are employers that have 100 or more full-time employees that arrive at one site between 6:00 and 9:00 a.m. So the plan, the development of this plan was really led by community transit. We currently have an interlocal agreement with community transit along with seven other Snohomish County jurisdictions to have community transit provide kind of oversight on the planning of, developing of the plans and then management, administration of the plans once they're implemented. So as the lead for that, community transit provided a lot of information to the various jurisdictions about shaping their plans, what type of information and content to put in to ensure that we meet state requirements for what's included. But they also provided the lead on community outreach. So through the development of these plans, community transit held several online open houses and workshops, doing some outreach to the general public as well as to affected employers across the county to get some input on how these plans were shaping up, what to include, what challenges they were facing. So in addition to that, for our plan, we had hosted our draft plan on our city website, giving opportunity for the public to kind of weigh in and provide any comment. We had a survey that they could fill out to provide input and feedback. We also did targeted outreach to our, our affected employers, and that's primarily one primera. So we kind of, we gave them an opportunity to preview the, the plan and provide some input. They were supportive of the plan. And then we briefed the Planning Commission on the plan earlier this month as well, asking for feedback and support. So. The Commute Trip Reduction Plan really is consistent with state goals. The state goal is for ultimately getting to a 60% drive-alone rate by affected employers by 2029. So that's an average of the goals set for cities across the state. Each city has kind of their own target value that's, that the state helps set, and ours is a 63% drive-alone rate by 2029. And the plan really is, just sets policies and requirements that affected employers have to follow in, in order to be compliant with our, with our plan. In general, the, the plan really requires affected employers to develop a CTR program, designate employee transportation affected employers to develop a CTR program, designate employee transportation coordinator and kind of distribute information about various options and alternatives to driving alone. The biggest change, the change between our current plan and the proposed plan really comes down to the fact that employers are required to implement a certain number of measures. Past plans, it just said they had to do a good faith to implement some some measures reducing or encouraging alternative trips. So the updated plan really, it expands the list of measures that they can they can choose from, but it requires them to do a minimum of five five measures. And the various measures that went from 15 to, I believe it's 23, are broken up into three different categories. Commuting support initiatives, information and education measures, and amenities and infrastructure. So now employers have to choose at least a minimum of five and one from at least each of those categories. In addition, we had considered briefly considered adding a commuter benefit ordinance, and this would apply to employers with 20 or more employees. I felt like we didn't have enough, we hadn't done enough community outreach and wanted to really make sure we understood kind of the potential impact to employers. So and what the commuter benefit ordinance would do would require those employers with 20 or more to either allow for monthly pre-tax deductions for transit passes or partially or wholly subsidize transit passes for their for their employees. So we're currently working on outreach to employers that would hit that threshold in the in our community. Trying to get some input from them on what they, on how significant of an impact this could be, whether they'd be supportive of that. And we're delaying kind of implementing this, looking at, this would be a potential addition to the next update. So not including it in the current update that's being proposed, but giving it more more fully considering it in the next update. As part of the update, as I had mentioned, we currently have an interlocal agreement with Community Transit to kind of to help us develop plans and administer these plans. They also provide can provide a lot of information that employers can use to distribute to their employees. Brochures, information about upcoming events and how to promote certain types of events with their with employees. So they provide that kind of information. And so but that interlocal agreement expires, and so we're looking to looking for the council to support the renewal of that agreement. The way that agreement is funded is the city currently receives a small amount of funding from WashDOT to implement our plan. And that funding currently goes straight to Community Transit to help us implement that. So the renewal of the agreement would just extend that and continue those funds from WashDOT to be provided to Community Transit. So there's no real additional financial obligation to extending the agreement. So. So that was really brief. I apologize. But so what we're looking for now is council support to adopt the 2025-2029 commute trip reduction plan and to support the renewal of the interlocal agreement. And with that, I'll close it.
Very good. All right. Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Any questions? It looks like Councilmember Page. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of questions, John.
Yeah.
The first one is, I know in your presentation, you talked about doing some community outreach. I know you, you know, you targeted Primera, you know, you said you had opportunity for people to weigh in on the website. What did you, you know, but I don't see anywhere in the presentation, you know, what did you hear in your community outreach?
So Primera, like I say, when we provided it to Primera, they were supportive. They looked at the measures that were being required. Primera has a pretty extensive commute trip reduction plan. And so they're already doing a lot of the measures that that are listed in that. On the on the website, we received, I want to say five to six residents who actually took the time to fill out the, excuse me, the survey. They were supportive of the plan. They were actually supportive of the additional commuter trip, the commuter benefit ordinance for that might that will likely be proposed at the next one, at the next update. Most of the respondents were Mont Lake Terrace residents that that commute outside of Mont Lake Terrace and to employers that currently don't have a commute trip production plan. But they were they were supportive of the proposed plan as as developed.
Okay, I know I said two questions, but I think I have three. The second question I have is, do we have any idea of how many businesses that are in Mount Lake Terrace that have people that are actively doing commuting, say like with their cars over, I don't know, five miles or, you know, anything that requiring them to drive versus them using the light rail? You know, like any idea whatsoever of how many businesses that are in this city? And have we heard from any of them?
I don't, I don't have that that information. I'm sorry to say. Yeah, that would, I think that part in part because I think most, a lot of businesses, if they're small enough, aren't required to kind of take those surveys of how their employees get to and from work. And so that might be some information that would be challenging to collect as businesses as a whole. If we were to, you know, as we consider kind of the commuter benefit ordinance, that additional one, that would apply to businesses in Mont Lake Terrace that have 20 or more. A quick look at business licenses and things like that for this, that would be about 34 that have 20 or more. Now, whether those businesses have, whether all those employees arrive between 6:00 or 9:00, we don't know at this point. That would be part of the outreach program, outreach effort we do. But if if we made that ordinance, then we would look to have them report on how their maybe report on how their employees get to and from work. Is that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, okay. But all right. My third question, thank you for that. My third question on policy, I'm looking at different policies, you know, that I outlined here. And policy LW2D point two talks about supporting the development of additional housing choices along public transit routes. But I didn't find a policy that's that says it wants to support the development of additional commercial businesses choices along public transit routes. And I would think that that would be pretty important, considering that we're talking about businesses that possibly, you know, that is going to trigger all of this. So, you know, I would, I would think that we would have, there would be a policy there that's especially with our comp plan, where again, where we're looking to increase over 2,700 businesses over the next 20 years. Something that is going to be in writing that's supporting just as important that additional housing along transit routes, additional businesses that are going to be along transit routes.
Yeah, I think I think one of the things that when you look at the comprehensive plan, you know, we're looking at how do, how, what, how do we provide options for businesses, no matter really where they're located in the city, right? And when we talk about the broader commute trip reduction plan that meets, that has, that's applicable to 100 or more employees, that's a pretty large size business. So for, I think some of the business growth that we might see in the city might be smaller businesses. And for that, that's where we were gonna, we lean a little bit more on how do people go from some of those transit routes, whether that's light rail or bus, if they need to do that that last mile? And that's looking at how do we improve the infrastructure for like bikes and pedestrians so that if transit doesn't go directly to your workplace, you can still take it there and then use active, alternative active modes of transportation to kind of make that final link. So looking at enhancing or improving, increasing our bike and bike and pedestrian facilities to make those, help make those connections.
Well, I remember in your last presentation, you kind of, we kind of flirted with the conversation about businesses. I think that was, the number was 20 employees, you know, also that, you know, you might want to, especially where we have so many businesses like our own that doesn't hit that 100, you know, player threshold. You know, are we not really thinking that hard about that group of? Are we just focusing still like on that that 50 to 100, you know, number?
No, I think actually, you know, we are looking at that. And that's why before we kind of jump into some some type of measure, we wanted to kind of do a little bit more active outreach to see how that would, how that would play out with those types of businesses, what kind of impact would that have? But we certainly are would are looking, would like to expand kind of the reductions that we could potentially see by considering that commuter benefit ordinance.
Great. Thank you for your patience. Appreciate it.
Do you mind if I add on to one of your comments?
Thank you, Councilmember Page. I'm sorry. Carolyn?
Oh, yes, sorry. I just wanted to add on to one of John's answers to Councilmember Page's question. We do in our economic vitality element of the comprehensive plan have a council policy to leverage planning and public investments to retain, expand and attract businesses and promote housing near town center. So we do have a policy that does encourage business development in our TOD areas. So while it's not in the commuter production program, we have a policy.
Thank you. Thank you, Geron. John, also related to Councilmember Page's second question, might encourage you to reach out to Puget Sound Regional Council and ask about their household travel survey that they do each few years, every few years, which has a lot of great data. It might not have specific data sufficient for Mount Lake Terrace, but it certainly has a lot of great information about Snohomish County in general. And we might be able to infer some information based on that, based on whatever information that you have available. So just encourage you and let me know if you need contact information at Puget Sound Regional Council. But but they do have some great data available. So encourage you to reach out to them. Okay, any other questions? Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none? Seeing none. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Councilmember Murray?
I'm moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Anybody second the motion to open the public hearing? Please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is now open. All right. Jennifer, do we have anybody signed up?
No one has signed up for in-person or remote public testimony on this item.
And anybody in the audience, too?
No.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, Councilmember Murray closes the public hearing. Councilmember Murray seconds. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is now closed. I am entertaining a motion to okay, I am entertaining a motion to adopt the 2025 to 2029 commute trip reduction plan and approve renewal of the interlocal agreement with Community Transit to coordinate, administer and manage CTR plans from Mount Lake Terrace and seven other Snohomish County cities. Do I have a motion?
I move for that motion, or do you want me to say it all over again?
I think we got it. We have a motion to support the commuter reduction plan and et cetera. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All right. Any further discussion on the commute trip reduction plan? Seeing none? I will call for the question then. Oh, Councilmember Woodard, please go ahead.
No, I no, I just wanted to acknowledge, John, the work you've been doing is just really outstanding. You know, you haven't been with us that long, but the progress that we've made in your time has been just remarkable. So just wanted to acknowledge, this has been a lot of hard work. It must seem a little weird. Nobody gives you feedback. It's because it seems straightforward as it can be, from a layman's perspective, at least speaking for myself. But I did want to acknowledge, I know you're doing a lot of hard work and it is showing, and we are very appreciative.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we all can echo those comments. Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. All right. If there's no further discussion, I will call for the question. All those in favor of adopting the 2025 to 2029 commute trip reduction plan and approve renewal of the interlocal agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have adopted that unanimously. Thank you all very much, John. As as Councilmember Woodard pointed out, thank you. You've done an amazing job. Garry, I see you also there. I appreciate all the work that you and your team have done to make this all come together and happen. So thank you. Thank you for your work. Okay, with that, we are moving on to a review of the July 3rd, the July 3rd meeting, which has been canceled. So that's an easy review. Now we are moving on to council comments. Council comments? I know Councilmember Sonmore has some comments. We'll start with you, please.
Thank you. I have four items that I would like to report out on. Number one is, first, I want to acknowledge a sexual assault is a heinous crime. And we never want a victim to feel disgrated, disgrated or offended by that or dishonored for that. What I heard tonight was there is a lack of follow-up issue with the victim's credibility, not writing it in her own words and and lack of investigation. So what I'm requesting is, I want to know if the police have any training on sexual assault investigations or something close to that. I don't know what it would be called. What was the timeline of the actions? What, and I'm not asking for this tonight, but I'd like a follow-on report for the council to hear. What would it take for an independence, independent review? What is the process when a sexual assault is reported? And do all cities have the same policy? What is the civil process in a sexual assault case and what is the criminal? And then I'd like to know, since she sounded like she was a Linwood resident, could she go through the Linwood Police Department and have this investigated? And I'm assuming that maybe this happened in Mount Lake Terrace, which I am so sorry. But I'd like to have some follow-up. I think it's good follow-up for anything that could happen next time that this happens. And I know we've had different sexual assaults happen in our city, unfortunately. But if we could look into that, I'd appreciate that. The second would be, I'd like to know how many parking tickets were given by the police department or have been contacted through code enforcement. The third is a legal analysis of the rat situation that John brought up this evening. And the last one would be, and we can't sit on our laurels for this, but we just heard that somebody may be in crisis on 54th and 223rd. So I'm hoping that we could follow up with a welfare check on that. And I believe that was a van situation that John brought up earlier today. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Yes, I think we're all anxious to get to hear back about that and certainly ask the city manager to follow up on the previous other comments. And and we're, will be anxious to hear back what the, what has transpired. So thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Any other council comments? Seeing none? Seeing none. We will move on to the next item, which I'm happy to announce is adjournment. Thank you all for your time tonight. Appreciate all the great work that everybody has done. And we will look forward to seeing you next week at the 3rd of July celebration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Just in case we're adjourned.
Take care.